Good evening, everyone. We'll call the meeting to order. Joy, would you please call the roll?
Hamilton?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Revolinsky?
Yes.
Boyer?
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes.
Hammers?
Yes.
Howley?
Yes.
Thank you. Any changes or additions to this evening's agenda? Okay, now we'll move to our consent agenda. We have approval of minutes from the January 28th meeting. We have approval of liquor licenses for Aranda's Mexican restaurant, Walmart store, 985, and Josie Hannis Design. We have a resolution for employment in Park and Rec. There are three employees that are recommended there. We have a resolution for the employment of a new police officer, Adam McIntyre. Resolution for the promotion in Fire Department, Ryan Kirka, to fire pump operator. And approval of claims in the amount of $251,188.92. Are there any questions regarding these consent agenda items? Not will entertain a motion to approve.
Move to approve consent agenda.
Move by Hamilton?
Second.
Second by Rasmussen. Please call the roll.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Boyer?
Yes.
Howley?
Yes.
Revolinsky?
Yes.
Thank you. We have no public appearances requested this evening, so we'll move on to our resolutions and action items. And we have council your third and final reading for the trail crossing ordinance. I don't believe we've received any public comment on that. This is a public hearing. I'll open that at this time and ask if there's any public comment on the ordinance. Not seeing any, we'll close the public hearing and ask what council wishes to do on this third reading.
I would move for approval from the third to through the final.
Thank you. Move by Hamilton to approve the third and final reading.
Second.
Second by Hammers. Any discussion?
A question. Darren, can you point out, I didn't have the, uh...
It's in...
The thing opened, but yeah, the amendment you made last time, where it is?
Right. It's paragraph F on the top, page two. Paragraph F there. The, uh...where it begins with the crossing shall, um, the wording was modified from, after public works directory and must be in conformance with the Iowa Department of Transportation and Iowa State Urban Design and specification parentheses SUDAS design manual accessible sidewalk requirements as applicable to public shared use path or trail crossing. That was what I'd asked to have amended to.
Okay, I see that now. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Okay, thank you. No other discussion. Now please call the roll.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Hammers?
Yes.
Revolinsky?
Yes.
Howley?
Yes.
Boyer?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Next council, you have a resolution for a residential tax abatement for 1,008 Prairie Lakes Drive, Susan Lawler. And this is, I believe, our first residential since our new policy coming before us. Kevin, do you have any comments on the application?
I do not, Your Honor. Support that.
Okay, so it's a valuation of $110,000. Your new policy states that the residential is eligible for exemption, 100% exemption for taxation on the first $75,000 over a period of three years. So, any questions? Not entertain a motion to approve the residential tax payment application?
To clarify, after it goes, if we approve it, it still goes to the assessor? Correct?
Indeed, the actual improvements will be assessed by the assessor afterward.
Okay. I'll move to approve.
Move by Howley to approve the resolution. Second by Revolinsky. Any discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All of those opposed, the same sign. Thank you. Next council, you have before you from our city attorney, a, we're just receiving this tonight, an agreement for law enforcement in the corporate municipality of Mahashe Vedic City, Iowa. Kevin, I'll have you give the background on discussions that you've had with the city about their law enforcement needs.
Yes, Your Honor. Met with the Vedic City Council last Friday, and of course, everyone probably saw in the paper where they were going to approach the city about possibly doing their policing services rather than going with the county. I understand the county had to deal with them for quite some time. I believe it was for around $6,000 and change. The nature of that agreement was going to be changing to be a per capita agreement instead of, I guess, the basis of the agreement before. And that was going to make that fee be, I think, somewhere around the not, slightly over $19,000. So, I don't know if you had read that article, council members had read that, but we were approached by them, and I did meet with them, and we discussed what are some concerns that we had had. There are a couple of what we believe to be surmountable challenges. But regardless, they were in agreement to a $13,000 a year fee, per year, for a set three-year period. That would be a static fee, $13,000 per year. At the end of that three-year period, we would assess where we're at with the service as far as the city goes. Is this, is this amount appropriate for the actual cost that we feel like we're having to, you know, undergo to do the service? Plus, would Vedic City be happy? So, reassessment period, three years out, but a set fee of $13,000 per year for the first three years of this agreement. The city, I would add to, Your Honor, the city actually currently does patrol around the airport area. So, we are currently, to some degree, going out to that area to do policing services.
They patrol the area, but one car goes by there very sporadically, not two cars going out there for extended time for any serious cause, leaving peripheral unprotected during the night, because there's usually two officers. Once in a while, three. Most things have changed dramatically since I've been there. It's, in my opinion, crazy. The taxpayers are paying us for a lot of things. One of those is law enforcement. They aren't paying us to go to Vedic City. Counties in Iowa, the sheriff's office are the ones who contract with other cities for law enforcement. I know none, I know of no city police departments, especially as small as ours, that contracts with outside cities for law enforcement. I think it's a crazy thing to do. They're understaffed now in the city, let alone going out there to Vedic City, adding that much more to their plate in that area.
Chief, do you have a comment on your discussions?
Some of the discussions that we have discussed is possibly bringing the department back up to 15 officers. If we had 15 officers, that would put three on a shift, which we would be able to, if we had an emergency call, depending on the city or the county, be able to handle that. Also, upgrading our vehicles to four-wheel-drive vehicles. There were some minor points that were being hashed out right now with Vedic City officials. You know, the voices he's concerned, you know, I voiced those with Kevin initially also. So, I mean, eventually, if we get to the point where we have 15 officers, is it manageable? Yes.
Okay. But then, in this budget, we don't, in this budget, we're not budgeting for 15 officers.
Correct.
And a $13,000 fee wouldn't cover the cost of a, of a new officer.
Currently, we have what, how many patrol officers?
Nine.
Nine. Okay. Total force?
And then two sergeants.
Total force then is?
Fourteen.
Fourteen.
And we just lost an officer.
So, well, we just hired one. Two, by resolution.
But we sought to train him.
Right.
So, it's going to be a year.
Still needs to go to the academy.
Correct.
Still be a year. So, you're still talking about only one other hire in order to accomplish your 15 goal?
Yes.
Okay. The agreement, as it was laid out to me, was to be able to afford a four-wheel-drive vehicle within three-year time period, correct?
Yeah. What, I think the indication I'm giving, you know, is $39,000 a year over a three-year period, which would pay for one vehicle within our police department. I do want to specify, though, that the change to four-wheel drive is not a result of this agreement or pertains singularly to this agreement. That's something that the chief and I have been discussing, because I just feel like that our police officers need to be fully operable and without that...
But this is explained as a, as a way to provide funding for that.
Yes, or if you were getting cars to get...
So, another officer would have to be provided through annual budget funding from the city's general fund.
Perhaps. We have not actually discussed that as being a result of this agreement. What we discussed was having the agreement for a three-year period and assessing where we were at with the agreement after a three-year period, which theoretically would allow us enough time to work over what, again, we consider to be surmountable obstacles. The country code, for instance, with a group known as the pundits on campus, I'm sure we're all familiar, the country code for India is actually 9111. A short pause in there being an integral part of making that call. If it doesn't exist, then it's 9111. And of course, if you do that, then a 911 tends to be triggered. So, that's one of the issues. The other issue would be the addresses, which the Vedic City Council seemed to feel was an overwrought complaint from the county. I don't know if that's true or not. I don't know whose side of that is really the stronger side, whether or not there's still a problem with signage, or whether or not that's actually been addressed. I think we're going to find that out, of course, but if it isn't, I feel pretty sure that that's something that we can address and correct. So, we feel like some of the impediments that have sort of been a stick in the crawl with the county over the agreement, we may be able to do something about that in a creative fashion. Vedic City Council also had some, some solutions, possible solutions in working with us to overcome that. But, you know, the agreement, I'm not hinging anything on the agreement, oh, we would do the agreement in order to get a vehicle, just kind of indicating that the price of the agreement for us over a three-year period would pay for a vehicle, for instance, or would pay for lots of other things, of course. But certainly, if we were able to work the agreement out to be affordable for us in the right kind of way, and also to be an agreement that provides the proper amount of service to Vedic City, it certainly would be healthy for the both of us, it would seem.
And of the calls that we get, we, the last three years, they've averaged about 100 calls. 63% of the calls that are out there are 911 missed dials. The number of criminal calls, other, they're relatively simple.
But it still involves time of an officer to go out, even if it's a missed dial, to verify that it is a missed dial.
Correct. And that's one of the things that we're, that's going to be, that's going to be a big issue correcting that.
It is, it is. And it was a big issue with the county.
Yes.
As I understand it.
I mean, as Tony can attest, once, we had the same problem with bank alarms. And once after they had so many missed dials, you know, they, they got X number of missed dials, and then we started charging. Soon as we started hitting the pocketbooks with them, those all went away. Same thing with car unlocks and things like that. Soon as there's a monetary thing that says, look, you know, we've got a problem, we need to correct it, you know, if we go through the training and things like that, can we do it? Yes.
But is that, is that a, a attainable goal, being able to charge someone for a missed dial, considering the group of people that are doing the missed dialing?
Some of the missed dials are because they just want someone to talk to. They've called our, they called the law center frequently to talk to our dispatchers. So, those are things that, you know, the majority of the calls are not. I can't think of one missed dial that I went through, 911 missed dial, that was a legitimate missed dial. It was...
Yeah, on a serious service level, I don't believe we're going to see, you know, a huge uptick in amount of service provision that we've got to do in the area over what we do now. Once we get over those, what we consider to be surmountable obstacles. Yeah, you know, these are not things that can't be helped or can't be, I would say fixed, but can't be, you know, we can't get over that. I think we can. And, you know, the, the whole point about the three-year period is assessing where we're at at the end of that three. If it's something undoable, and it is drawing away significant amounts of resources, perhaps, then it is something that could be reconsidered. There's other people out there, obviously, to do the service.
Not for three years. And you don't foresee that being a problem, but it could be a problem. And what if there are two working at night?
Perhaps a two-year period.
And there's a domestic abuse call out there. Do you two respond to it at Vedic City?
Yes.
A two-year...
It's mandatory.
A two-year period may be more reasonable time than counsel might feel appropriate.
John, isn't this, isn't this a one-year renewable?
A year at a time.
It's a year at a time, but...
It's extend, it's extendable for three years.
But, but doesn't say the fee is for the first year is $13,000, and then it can, everything can be renegotiated after that? Isn't that what this says?
If there's, basically, it's intended.
John, if you're going to address, why don't you come on up to the microphone?
Also, we were talking about providing some level of stability. If you're going to do, you know, a service agreement, you need to provide some level of stability in costing.
In reading this, I would, wasn't sure that, the way you described it is, well, how you wrote it. So, I just...
This is a scratch model, too. I want to make clear that. What you're looking at is, we haven't went over that yet and had agreement together. John was encouraged this evening, I encouraged him, just to come up with what base we would start with for our discussions of what we'd like to be in here as far as inclusions.
Conversation to make twice. Anyway.
The agreement you have in front of you is from conversation with Kevin and with the city attorney for Vedic City, Nancy Watkins, who's here tonight, too. The gist of it is the county suggested fees for a substantial increase. The fees that Kevin discussed were based on an approximate $10 per capita, which is 1,200 and so on, folks out on the Vedic City geography that is attached on your map. The thinking was, the agreement would have the same content that is in what the county has been providing, which is limited services. And they're pretty limited. I've seen the same agreement in another town up northeast. The patrol from the sheriff's department is probably through there a couple times a day, response to calls, as you're discussing. And they very much stick to the limitations that are in the agreement. There's no calls about nuisances that are responded to by the sheriff's department and with the present agreement. No minimal calls, no calls that have to do with things that would be dealt with, with civil infraction ordinances and so forth. So, the same limitations are put in this that have been in the county agreement. So, you'd have, hopefully, not too much interruption in the day-to-day of our police force. But you can never tell. Tony's right. You can never tell when you're going to be called upon and going to need the personnel there rather than, than here. But I guess the thing is, within the scope of what's capable, that's something I leave for the department to talk with you. And I think Vedic City, at this point, is looking at it partly from the standpoint of cost, but partly also from the standpoint of, they're close to us, too, and we're close to them, and there's already some officer contact in the area.
Also, to complement what John is saying, this is, this is a beginning. This is a starting document. The, on the table tonight is, shall council approve actually doing the service provision with Vedic City, and what other requirements would council like to see in here now, or what would council like to see, what we can bring back. First off, is there a willingness to do, you know, an agreement for service delivery? That's the first question. And certainly, what needs to be in the agreement follows.
Should this not go to committee? I mean, that's, I guess, what I would suggest, hash out some details and maybe get a little more information.
Well, John, I still had a question that I didn't get answered yet, before you go down.
Yeah, go ahead.
Sorry.
No, that's all right.
So, anyway, the way Kevin described it, I'm just trying to make clear if we're entering to agreement or this agreement, make it clear what it is. Kevin suggested that it would be a three-year agreement, and it was $13,000 a year. That would be, we've already pre-agreed to that case.
Well, we haven't pre-agreed. We just...
Well, I mean, in other words, that was your...
Yeah, that's our negotiating point, yeah.
That was the way you described the agreement. But the way you wrote the agreement says the fee for the initial year is $13,000.
Right.
And then, in the next paragraph, you say, "Once established, the rate shall not be amenable during the duration of this agreement." But that means for the, the duration of the agreement is for three years, or is it for...
Intent was to stick with the $13,000 except for substantial change. And so, if you are looking at an extension for next year and nothing's changed, and you actually, by adjusting a few things, have fewer calls than you anticipate, there wouldn't be any reason for an increase. If you have, let's say, an immigration of 500 more population in Vedic City or something like that, that's going to be a substantial change. It'll require more manpower, probably have more calls, probably have more other considerations than we can think of right now. But that's something that has happened in the past. So, the intention is that if you have substantial changes, there isn't any reason you couldn't negotiate for a substantial increase. Also possible, you could have a decrease. But I guess the thing is, it's open-ended on the next two years, so you can still go back. You can also terminate it by giving a notice. And you can also have a mutual agreement to amend it if it looks like this just isn't working. You get the two city councils together, or your committees together, and you figure it out.
Yeah, significant point being that the two things that the Vedic City Council felt right off the bat that they could agree to were a three-year fixed term for a contract, and then a review, and that the price for that would be $13,000 a year. Now, coming back to council, puts us in the position of saying, what would be council's pleasure? Number one, actually agreeing to provide a service or not. And number two, if so, what, what would that entail as far as other things that you'd like to see in the agreement? A shorter time period, two instead of three years, for instance, or, or more money. I did start off negotiations at $15,000 and would remind council that $13,000 is 1,000 more than double, roughly, what Vedic City currently plays, pays the county.
John, just to finish this point, I do see that the next point, it says, "The agreement shall terminate in 2016." So, it says, "The rate shall not be amenable unless there's substantial change of circumstances." So, that's what you just described. So, now I understand. I had another question for Julie. You said that this would work, in your mind, if we had 15 officers, but right now, we only have 14.
If we had three on a shift.
Right.
If we had three on a shift, then we can, because if we had an emergency, one place or another, you know, we do work well with the county. And, you know, if one entity needs backup, that is there. But, you know, if they have an emergency out in the county, we have an emergency out at Vedic City, and we get a third emergency, then we're calling in officers and paying overtime.
I understand, Julie. But, you know, having just reviewed our proposed budget for next year, you know, clearly, you're not going to have 15 officers next year. So, does that mean you oppose this agreement, or are you all right with it?
The law, I would like to see 15 officers just for the officer safety issue in our response team. I mean, that's...
I understand.
I mean, I don't think it's fair for the officers to be out there by themselves on two emergency calls. You know, that was why, when we initially discussed it, that we wanted to go to the 15, so we'd have three per shift. So, regardless, you know, we could fill in. You know, during the day, when the administration's there, it's not an issue because we go out and answer calls. However, you know, it's the night, the night shift is my big concern, because we don't have the extra people available.
I know in your budget, you have a huge amount that we put in this year for overtime.
Correct.
So, if you had the 15th officer, would that go down substantially or not?
It would go down some. I mean, there's...
Not enough?
It would go down some. I mean, because we can never tell how many search warrants we're going to have that we have to call in extra officers, the number of court time, you know, if we have a big case, there's the, you know, is it going to go down, all the way down to zero? I could never foresee that.
Or within $13,000?
I mean, we literally had 900 to 1,000 hours of comp time every year that we're paying. That's an average for the last three or four years.
And the problem you have is, even if you have 15 officers, there's always someone on vacation, comp time if there's not overtime, sick, leaving for other jobs, when you replace them. And there's always, you know, even if we had allowed 14, we might have had 11 or 12 lots of times. And you're shorthanded. And as a city, how can we send our officers outside of the city of Fairfield to take care of law enforcement elsewhere? I don't understand how to do that.
My, one question would be, though, if the admittedly surmountable obstacles were surmounted, and they weren't obstacles anymore, would then there be the need for, I mean, granted that, I mean, normal call, like normal policing type activities, very minute number of calls come from the area. I mean, if those things weren't the case, would an extra officer wouldn't then be needed? Correct?
Correct. I mean, if we got all the 911 missed dials taken away, I mean, criminal calls that we get are five to 10 a year at Vedic City. The rest of it is hunting violations or accidents. If the accidents are on the county roads, that wouldn't be our responsibility. That's, on the county roads, that would be the county's responsibility.
And how many times a day does an officer find himself located at the airport?
If we're lucky, once per shift. They usually go out to the, just to open up the cars. Once per shift, they go out to the airport.
Three times a day?
Twice a day.
Well, I think, I think these points of discussion are, are good to have. And if there's a way that we can get a little bit more data, chief, to go over with, say, Public Safety Committee and, and city administrator, and see if, if there's a more detailed report about what the impact would be on the department short-term in particular, because you're saying right now that you're going to have 13 officers for the next year.
Originally, when we were looking at this, we weren't, we didn't have...
So, I know it's, it's recent.
We were full staff.
But, yeah, I would ask the Public Safety Committee, as recommended by Connie, to, to meet prior and to go over the agreement.
It'd be nice to know how many calls have been at night, if you can, I assume you can tell that.
I look into the call log.
Okay. So, entertain a motion then to refer the, a consideration of agreement of a 2080 police services with Vedic City to Public Safety Committee.
So moved.
Moved by Boyer.
Second.
Second by Revolinsky. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign?
No.
Thank you. Next, council, we'll move on to TIF agreement amendment with the Fairfield Hotel and Suites. And Kevin, I know that you had, had basically told us, I think, a couple of meetings ago, that there was some discrepancy in what the original agreement was and how we weren't able to really meet the requirements for some of the refunded money through TIF. So, this is an agreement that, that we're going to be able to look at, or is it something that we're going to just discuss tonight?
This would be something that would be discussed tonight. And council, with council approval, we would craft a document to later bring back for council actual approval as a contract. That would be something we could sign. Basically, the gist of this agreement amendment would have the term limit on the rebatement. It's a TIF rebatement. In other words, the American Inn would pay its taxes and get a rebate through TIF for a period of no more than six years and a maximum of no more than $500,000. And, you know, currently their valuation is around 950, a little over $950,000. And my understanding is, in their first complete year, that valuation may jump to about 1.5, but clearly not as appreciable an evaluation that would have, would have been expected before. There's a couple of different theories for that. One would just be undeveloped property adjacent to structure and property. But regardless, we're hoping to do something about that. But right now, that would be the terms of the agreement.
Okay. So, there'll be no action on that tonight. Will we see that at our next meeting on February 25th?
I'd just like an approval to actually craft an agreement. If that's, if this amendment is to the pleasure of council, we'd like a movement to do so. And if we do that, we'll bring that contract back for your...
So, we'll call just a, we'll ask for then a motion to craft an updated agreement on the TIF with the Fairfield Hotel and Suites. I'll see.
So moved.
Moved by Revolinsky.
Second.
Second by Rasmussen. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign? Thank you. And finally, we'll be setting a public hearing for the annual budget for our next meeting on February 25th. And John, rather than your ways and means report, why don't you give us an update on where ways and means is with the budget, and then we'll go ahead and set that date.
We met last week, got the big picture on the budget. Basically, every aspect of it was presented. But we're going to be meeting again this week on Wednesday at 5:30. Everyone's invited, if you'd like to, you know, hear, really get into the details of it. Personally, I thought it was, you know, well-done. Joy and Kevin have done a lot of good work to pull it together and kind of reorganize things for us. And, you know, it's a matter of really seeing if we want to go ahead and, you know, go that route or trim it a little bit. I think that, that's basically where we're at right now. You know, it's balanced what they, what they showed, but it does, as you probably read in the paper, it does require a slight increase in property taxes. And so, it's a matter of just reviewing everything, making sure that we feel like this is the best way to go for the city. So, we'll be looking at it on Wednesday.
Okay. Make a motion then, John, to approve the public hearing for February 25th?
Yes.
Moved by Revolinsky.
Second.
Second by Hamilton. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign? Thank you. Counsel, in my report, I just wanted to bring attention again to the two efforts that are going on regarding our community in an organized way, and that is the Blue Zone effort. And as I'd mentioned, I think at the last meeting, this month, there are a series of focus groups for a lot of different areas that Blue Zone will be addressing. And two of them that I just wanted to draw your attention to involve community engagement. So, this is the area where I think citizens in general can come, learn about the effort, see if they're inspired to participate in their own way, some way. But I think it'd be a great opportunity to get a lot of information about what... of focus groups for a lot of different areas that Blue Zone will be addressing. And two of them that I just wanted to draw your attention to involve community engagement. So this is the area where I think citizens in general can come, learn about the effort, see if they're inspired to participate in their own way, some way. But I think it'd be a great opportunity to get a lot of information about what can be done through the program. The first one will be February 19 at 6:30 PM, and that's at the Arts Convention Center, and that'll be it. Those are 90-minute meetings. And then the same meeting would be held on Saturday morning, the 23rd, at the Arts Convention Center from 9:30 to 11:00 AM. So if anyone, certainly encourage any council members to go, but also spread the word that those are open, open public meetings for that. And then, we will have our own meeting as a council on March 4, the Monday, March 4, at 7 o'clock here. You're just learning this?
Yeah.
Okay.
I didn't know that.
So that'll be a community policy meeting. So we'll, we'll be addressing just those issues within the Blue Zone project that have to deal with community policy. And as I mentioned last time, the Complete Streets Program, tobacco policy, upgrading parks, those kinds of things. So that's, those will be coming up. Also, I wanted to mention that the RAG-BRI planning is well underway. Great organizational team's been assembled so, so far. Many more other committee heads are coming along. So the response has been terrific by the community. But we need literally hundreds of volunteers in the end. So this is just the tip of the spear. So I would just mention that if you know someone who has expressed some enthusiasm about RAG-BRI coming to our community and participating in some way, that there will be ways to participate, openings to participate. And they should just contact the CBB directly to indicate their interest. So I just wanted to mention those few things. We'll move on, then, to our committee reports, and I believe our personnel committee would have a report. Martha?
Yes. Personnel committee did meet. We met on last Wednesday, the 6th of February, with Mayor Malloy and city administrator Kevin Flanagan, and city attorney John Morrissey and Carl Chandler from the Water Department, to review the request of Dave Ogden regarding his termination with the Water Department. And there were statements and discussions, and the personnel committee voted to uphold the recommendation made by the city administrator to terminate Mr. Dave Ogden.
Okay. Thanks, Martha. And that was phase four of the personnel appeal process. Of phase five would be an appeal to the full council, so that may be coming. And I have a letter prepared for Mr. Ogden and his attorney to indicate that, so we may be hearing back from them as well. Thank you for your report. I think that does it for us, folks. So entertain